On the January twenty-third meeting of the PC to order, we have a roll call, please.
Sure, I'd like to announce that Commissioner Freeman and Commissioner Latassa will be absent, but we have Chair Dawson, Vice Chair Bluth.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield. Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
And Commissioner Silva.
Here.
And staff members present are Planning Manager Levi Hill and myself Recording Secretary Erica Barrera. And if you'd like, I can go ahead and announce to the public how they can participate via Zoom.
Yes, please.
Okay, information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at iSearchMonterey.org. Remote commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with this meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
So for the consent agenda, does anyone have a have a comment or change to the minutes of the last meeting?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Let me just quickly make sure we don't have anyone looking to speak from the public on the consent agenda.
There is a hand raised online. I mean, go ahead and allow them to talk. Marlena Brown.
Hi, not for the consent agenda, but could you speak into the mics better? It's very, very hard to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
How about we turn them on?
Just me.
Make sure all the mic run. All mic.
This one's on.
But I turned it on when I got it.
Okay. Okay, so we were we were taking a movement in a in a second. Did we get a second?
I'll do that.
Bob did. Second foot Bob, all in favor of the of the minutes, we say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. It's all of us.
Okay, the minutes are approved.
Okay, so on to item number three. Consider one-one-two-five Altamasa Road.
We'll have to check and make sure we if we have any members of the public that want to speak on items not on the agenda.
There are no hands raised online and there are no members of the public in the chambers.
Okay, so the lady who called in is satisfied? Okay, thank you. Item number three, consider one-one-two-five Altamasa Road use permit application UP twenty-three dash oh-one-eight-seven to allow construction of a garage on slopes over twenty-five percent and variance application VA two-three oh-one-eight-eight to allow a garage exceeding twelve feet in height. Applicant Terry Latassa, TLA, owners Mark and Valerie Morrow. Can we have a staff report, por favor?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you, Chair. So the first item is a request for use permit for a accessory structure, in this case, a garage on portions of the site that are sloped at greater than twenty-five percent. And also for a variance for accessory structure height exceeding twelve feet and the project sites located at eleven-twenty-five Altamasa Road. And staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the use permit and variance applications with the findings and conditions of approval listed in the draft resolution. So this slide shows the project site situated at the corner of Altamasa Road. An Altamasa circle as shown in the aerial photograph. Site is zoned RE twenty D one with a residential estate with the D one design control overlay, which requires architectural review of all new construction. And the general plan land use designation for this site is low-density residential. The proposed project is a new four-hundred-and-forty-square-foot garage to replace a carport that was damaged by the winter storms of last year. The use permit, as mentioned previously, is required per a general plan policy for development on portions of property that are sloped at greater than twenty-five percent. And the variance is to allow an accessory structure to exceed the twelve-foot max for an accessory structure. This slide shows the existing site and also includes a topographical survey. So as you see here, the site has a lot of topography on the site, sloping in different directions depending on which side of the existing structure you're on. Just to help orient everyone, this is Altamasa Road and Altamasa Circle right here. And then the actual property boundaries can be seen in this dash line here. So this area outside of the property that appears to that it would be a part of the project site is actually within the right-of-way of Altamasa Circle. But does create, as you probably saw on the aerial image, a large area of vegetation between that kind of buffers the house from the actual roadway. And then, of course, the circle drive coming off of Altamasa Road here. As you see here in this pink outline is where the previous carport was. And this is what was damaged by the tree that was fallen. So right now, as it stands today, the house does not have any covered parking as you would typically see. So this is the proposed project and bear with me, the the plant's been reoriented a little bit to help kind of that the proposed site plan and the associated drawings on the page. So now north is oriented this way. So here you have the circle drive with Altamasa Road going right here. And Altamasa Circle would be right approximately right here. So this is the proposed site plan. It shows in this highlighted area of tan shows the sloped area that is greater than twenty-five percent. And in this blue shaded box is the proposed accessory structure garage. And of course, it's situated coming off of the existing driveway. This slide shows the proposed elevations of the proposed garage. And then in this lower north elevation to the lower left-hand corner, you can see here where you have the request for the height that exceeds twelve feet. So you have a maximum height of twenty feet that runs right here. Height as defined by the code is measured from the tallest point of the structure to the grade directly beneath it. So that's why the maximum height of the structure is considered twenty feet when you look at the grade directly beneath it. So over here, rather than taking one side or the other, the way the code prescribes that height is measured is by taking the point of the wherever the exterior of the building is and the plumb vertical distance of that to the nearest grade, whether that's existing or proposed grade, whichever one's more restrictive. And this simply just shows the roof plan and then the floor plan of the garage. So as I mentioned earlier, and apologize for the amount of text on the screen. We've tried to underline and highlight the pertinent areas, but the general plan safety element policy B one B does prescribe that areas slopes over twenty-five percent of grades should be restricted to development and as and should only be allowed as determined by the planning commission. And as also shown on here, it should be designed and located to minimize impacts to adjoining property and the public right-of-way. And then also in that policy outlines that the planning commission shall determine that the amount and location of twenty-five percent slope area so severely restricts the development potential of the lot. The prohibiting development on the twenty-five percent slope deprives such property of privileges enjoyed by other similar properties. That that language also falls in line with some, you'll see a similar language in the variance findings. So it's kind of this policy outlines the similar finding that will have to also be made for the variance. And speaking of findings, that brings us to our use permit analysis. And the first finding for use permit is that the proposed use is in accord with the objectives of this chapter and the purposes of the zone. And as we outlined earlier, the sites developed with an existing single-family residence, which is consistent with the purpose of the residential estate zone. And the proposed structure would provide covered parking for that single-family dwelling. And the garage size is an appropriate size for the single-family dwelling and the point-six-seven acre lot. So staff feels this finding can be made. Finding two is that the proposed use and the proposed conditions under which it would be operated or maintained is consistent with the general plan and will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of persons residing, working in or adjacent to the neighborhood of such use. And would not be a detriment and would not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity or the general welfare of the city. Again, this is a accessory structure for a scene for a residential use that's located in a residentially-zoned district and is designed to be residential in character and compatible with the existing single-family residence. And then it's also consistent with the safety policy B one B that we discussed earlier. And it has been designed and located to minimize the impacts to adjacent lots and right-of-way drainage aesthetics and vegetation as it's been located off the existing circle drive away from the public right-of-way and away from view of adjacent properties. And the third finding is that the use that the proposed use will comply with any specific condition of approval and the project will be required to comply with all the standard conditions and any special conditions of approval that are applied to the project. And that brings us to our variance analysis. So the first finding for a for a variance is that because of special circumstances or condition applicable to the subject property, and that includes size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, the strict application of the requirements of this ordinance deprives such property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. So as we looked at the topographical survey earlier, the site, the lot is kind of an irregular-shaped lot, features a lot of topography all across the site. And then there's an existing single-family dwelling that's already constructed kind of at the center of the site. All these create what staff does consider to be a special circumstance or an unusual circumstance that would limit this property or restrict it beyond what you would typically see and would deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. So again, staff feels this finding could be made. Finding number two is that the granting of the application will not be detrimental or interest to property or improvements in the vicinity of the development site or to the public health, safety, or general welfare. And staff agrees that the project would not be detrimental to property and the vicinity as the garage is set back a significant distance from all property lines is limited to a modest four-hundred-and-forty square feet. And it would actually bring the site back into conformance as currently I mentioned. It does not have any covered parking as required by the zone and now would provide that covered parking. So staff finds that staff feels that this finding can be made. And third, that the granting of the application is consistent with the purposes of this ordinance and will not constitute a grant special privilege inconsistent with limitations on other properties in the vicinity and in the same zoning district. And the staff feels that this proposal is consistent with this finding as it's as previously mentioned, residentially-zoned, residential, residentially-developed. And this is an accessory structure for the residential dwelling on-site and has been designed in residential character and would not constitute a grant of special privilege as there are several garages in the vicinity. It's kind of it's recognized as the norm in the neighborhood. And and due to the unusual circumstances described above, staff finds that this variance is warranted. And with that, staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the use permit and variance applications. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Precious. What was the size of the original carport? Well, I'm asking is are we is it about the same size?
It's it's comparable in size. I believe the garage is maybe a hundred square foot larger than the carport.
The height, it says here twelve feet, but the height of the site from the slab to the peak is what?
So.
Because it shows that, you know, including that foundational.
Yeah, so the drawings take a maximum height and it's measured probably it's 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 higher than what it actually is. So as you see here, the maximum height was taken from the highest point of the structure to the lowest point, and that's twenty feet. So the exact measurement would actually be for height would be here to here.
I understand.
Or here to here, that exact height, I would don't have the exact height.
It's about fourteen and a half.
That would be my estimate. I was going to say around fifteen feet.
Well, looking at the slope, it just it it's consistent with the 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 main structure of the roof. So I don't think it's extra high. That's why I was asking. The alternate site, it would have the same restrictions that the twenty-five percent rule?
The alternate site, I'm I'm not sure what you're.
There's there's a.
Somewhere else on the property.
Yeah, there's another site shown illustrated on the property as an alternate. Is it the same set of circumstances?
So the entire site does include topography and and most of it has some area that exceeds the twenty-five percent. And speaking with the applicant, this particular site was chosen to minimize the impact to the neighboring property owners as well as the public right-of-way is why this site was selected.
Okay, and then just for clarification, if the if this was an application for an ADU, we wouldn't be here.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, Mike. What is the actual slope that we're dealing with?
So in the area where it's located, I believe it varies, but this is the area that has been identified. It is greater than twenty-five percent. And I can go back to the topography, the topographic map, if you'd like.
I'm just curious as to what what slope they would be believing. Is it thirty-five percent or forty percent?
Sure, let me go back to the topographic map and see if.
Those are one-foot elevation marks?
Looks like it.
The site plan just identifies it as greater than twenty-five percent. And that's kind of how it's prescribed in that policy. Just says anything over twenty-five percent, so it doesn't really prescribe a set slope that's an absolute
Thank you.
prohibition.
Sure.
Two questions. Levi, there's on the on the site plan, just to the left of the proposed garage, there is a note which reads four-foot-high trash enclosure, no roof. It does not indicate whether that is existing or new. Is that existing?
It is.
And then my second question, has there been any discussion regarding the proximity of the forty forty-inch diameter redwood tree, which appears to be six feet away from the corner of the garage?
We did talk about tree removals as with the applicant as part of the processing of this application. And that was another reason that the garage was cited where it is, is to minimize the impact on existing vegetation on-site. The degree of which it would be impacted has not been discussed in detail as the tree removal permit would be issued as a part of the architectural review permit.
So are you saying then that that tree would be subject to removal?
Not as identified on this plan, but any trees that are identified to be removed as a part of this application would be required to obtain a tree removal permit along with that architectural review permit.
So with that in mind, if the redwood tree is not subject to removal, has there been any discussion regarding an arborist report for that tree?
Not an depth discussion. I'm sure that that'll be. I mean, it's definitely we have pre-protection measures and guidelines that are city adopted guidelines. We the drip lines and canopies aren't shown on this particular site plan. And the commission is welcome to add a condition of approval requiring such review prior to architectural review.
I had a question. The standard condition of approval five B requires available water. Do they have to do they have to find water for for a garage?
No, that's a standard condition of approval for accessory structure use permits. Probably carried over from a and probably contemplates an ADU-type structure that would actually have a water use.
Yeah.
I imagine with this particular garage, there are no being water connections or be no use for no need for a water.
As far as we know, there's. Be the same as the carport. Same as what? When the water needs to be the same as the carport.
That's that's applied just in the instance that when they come in for, as you see, we just have a floor plan right now. It's pretty conceptual. So when they come in for a building permit or an architectural review permit, for whatever reason, there's a water fixture, a sink or something in there, then we can go through the proper procedure to ensure that they have the water credit.
That's all I've got. Can we hear from the applicant?
The applicant is available for questions.
Oh, through you.
Correct.
Questions for the applicant? No, 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 no. Okay, no questions for the applicant. How about comments? No comments?
I think this is more of an improved, but consistent with we should. Neighborhood requirements for covered.
When we need. We should check for public public comments before we get into deliberation.
I thought you asked.
Yes.
Yes, I did. Okay, so public comment. Does anyone have a hand up?
Yeah, once again, information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at iSearchMonterey.org. I currently see no hands raised online.
All right, give them give them a couple of breaths. Maybe they're trying to get in. Or not. All right, now some comment.
My comment stands, so.
What was your comment, Mike?
That it's it's an improvement, but it's basically consistent with the neighborhood requirement of covered parking.
Therefore, it's a good one.
Yeah, it it looks like it's a really well-thought-out plan to implement a replacement for a lot that really is difficult. So I think they've put in the the thought to resolve this in a very effective way.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve this application with a special condition that an arborist report be prepared prior to ARC.
I'll second.
No less. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure, Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield. Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
And Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Hey, that motion carries with a vote of five. The decision is appealable to the city council within ten days if applications online or in our planning office.
Thank you so much.
Chair Dawson, I need to recuse myself for item number four.
That's right. I have that note. Thank you very much and see you next time.
Yeah, he has a panelist, so he'll just jump in.
So we're we're getting close to records. I'm not having enough.
No, this is allowed to be.
That's it. Okay, so I'm going over to is that site of number four? Paging, paging, paging. Okay, consider nine-six-zero Del Monte Center. Use permit UP two-two dash oh-one-two-five to allow a new AT&amp;T mobility wireless communication facility on an existing commercial building. Applicant Tom Johnson. Okay, can we have a staff report on this, please?
Yes, we have with us our contract planner, Jerry Hiddleman, and he is now sharing screen. And he has been unmuted and he's ready to go.
Great.
Hi, Jerry.
Hello, hello, Chair Dawson and missionaries. As stated, the item before you is, can can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. It's the.
Okay, great. Uh it's the uh it's A T and T wireless facility at nine sixty Del Monte Center. U P twenty-two oh one two five. And here's the uh location of the project. We have Highway one, this location, Mon Mon Ross Avenue and the Del Monte Center. So this is the Del Monte Center um shopping center. And the project site is actually the Petco Building, which is right here in red. As you can see, there's a Rite Aid building here and a Whole Foods Market in this location. The ownership is A A T Del Monte L L C. Again, Del Monte Shopping Center. Applicant Tom Johnson, T S J Consulting. We have uh an A T and T mobility wireless facility proposed. The zoning is C two community commercial and the general plan designation is also commercial. Um as you'll see in the following slides, the rooftop area on the Petco Building, uh they propose to place nine new panel antennas, fifteen remote radio units, some surge protectors, uh G P S unit. And this will all be screened by a um a plastic screen, the um fiber reinforced plastic screen, as you'll see in photo simulations. Uh on the ground level, the ground level equipment will actually be between the Rite Aid building and the Petco Building. And they will have a thirty kilowatt stand but standby backup generator for emergency purposes, three cabinets. And it'll be enclosed with a redwood fence. Uh this is considered a new wireless facility, so we actually have a hundred fifty day shot clock. So that would end on April twenty ninth of this year. Um focusing in on the Petco Building here and the Rite Aid building, you'll see that the antennas will be on the roof in two locations here and here. And the support equipment again will be between these two buildings. And that will be mainly accessed by from the rear. There is a parking area and a driveway in the back. Focusing in on those antennas, the one on the left has three antennas. Uh and then we'll have a series of six antennas, as you can see, displayed in the other enclosure area. This will become clearer when you see the elevations. Uh but we'll start with the support equipment area. Here's the Petco Building over here, Rite Aid Building, and there is a small access way through there, and the support equipment will be right in that location. This is a close up of the uh support equipment. Again, three cabinets, some other support equipment and one emergency generator. This shows the uh existing south elevation on the top. So we're actually looking at kind of at the rear of that Petco Building. And then you can see the three antennas in this location and then a screening uh screened area as well as six antennas this location within again an enclosed screen uh area. And then the support equipment will be down here between the buildings. Different view of the antennas on the rooftop and the support equipment down below. Um just like to jump back to this slide for a second. The um here's the existing rooftop is right here. And actually, the uh antenna enclosures on either side will be three feet nine inches above that existing uh feature on the roof. Going to the um photo simulations, this is the view from Highway one Rio Highway. As you can see, this is the existing view, if you can see that, and that's the existing roof of the Petco Building. And here's the Petco Building roof with the two enclosures. So they are uh screening them with the fiber reinforced plastic screening and they're they'll be painted to match the color of the building. And here you can see the view from the parking lot looking towards the Petco Building. And here is the existing view, and here are the two enclosures on either side of the roof. Here's another more oblique view from the parking lot existing again. And again, you could see the those F R P screens, they call them right here. Won't be able to see the support equipment from any location where the public would be uh than the shopping center. Yeah, you can't see it from the back of the building. Here's the um support equipment enclosure is between the buildings and it'll be enclosed by a redwood fence. And um as you can see up here, it's pretty much adjacent to Soladad Drive and Highway one in this location. So we did uh have a noise study that is required for the facility and the maximum noise level at the nearest property line is forty-seven point three decibels. And then this maximum is below the commercial limit of sixty-five decibels uh for open space and residential limit of sixty decibels during the daytime uh as well. And the emergency generator, they'll test it, but it'll only be tested during daylight hours. And then, of course, used during emergency purposes. Moving to the R F study results, proposed antennas would be compliant with F T C rules. No public safety limits would be exceeded at the ground level or any adjacent buildings. So looking at the site plan, here is the antennas to the left. And I know this came up last time, the yellow is the occupational limit. That's for workers working on the roof and the blue is the public limit. And these, as you'll see in the horizontal views, uh uh go out in uh at the roof level. They don't go down to the ground level. And this is the area where we do have this six antennas that are oriented in two different directions. And as you can see, the um occupational and public limits go stay at the roof level for the Petco Building, and they actually don't reach the um Rite Aid building adjacent and do not reach ground level, as you'll see over here. Here's the Petco Building, and this is where the display is. It's hard to show the oblique view, but it it doesn't go on top of the Rite Aid building. Actually comes more out in this direction. And again, this is where the support equipment is and no effect on the ground level. Same thing here with the other display um antennas. The arrays would go out towards the Petco Roof and also towards the Petco Roof and a little bit beyond in the upper location. So we do have some R F conditions that post installation, the R F coverage report is required within thirty days of installation to make sure that's shows exactly what I just showed you in terms of the uh radio frequency arrays. And also limited access uh be maintained to the roof area and appropriate R F alerting signage must be displayed. So with that, uh staff does recommend that the planning commission approve use permit. U P twenty-two oh one two five with the recommended findings and conditions of approval. Um I'm available to answer any questions. The applicant is also here. I saw he's in attendance and maybe his R F engineer is here as well to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Um questions? No, Mike?
Let's talk about signage. Having had the experiences of having to walk up two signs past the danger and then read the signs facing another direction. What directions do all these signs read from?
That is a good question because they would be displayed. Let me see if I could find the R F report here. So see. So they do have the signage as required for all projects similar to this. As you can see, the signage would be directly around where the um F R P screens are here to caution signs posted on approaching the sides of the um the fiber reinforced plastic screen and then also two signs in this other location. So that's what they're proposing.
And then also the it shows the lower um that section is I think it's plus or seventeen.
Mm hmm.
Is there any signage in that direction?
So the science would be more located right where um the F R P screens are.
I think what I'm talking about is
It's this area, right?
Normal maintenance of a building requires you to do different approaches.
Mm hmm.
And it's really melancholy when you walk up and then read or look around the corner and see that there's a sign that says danger. And I I use the I use the example of a minefield. My experiences with minefields is that if you're doing a hasty minefield, you may put signs on your side, but not on the other. And it's very melancholy to walk up on the opposite side and and then read those signs. This is a danger area.
If you're still alive.
That that's that's yeah. But with this kind of a situation, why can't we just do all four sides?
Mm hmm. Um, that sounds reasonable. Maybe we can wait to hear from the applicant, but that could be added to as a condition of approval if that would
Second, second.
Yeah.
This generator sits down in the equipment cage, not down below or up above.
That is down below, so it's between the two buildings.
How much fuel does it have?
That uh that I don't know. Um perhaps the applicant would be able to to enlighten us on that.
And that also goes to additional fuels. Um, what is the weight of all this equipment on the roof?
I don't have that offhand. There was a structural report um included in the application package, so I can look that up.
Well, I'll table that.
Yeah. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Dean? Um I've got a question. Um the it shows that the the one set of antennas is shooting right at the mountain. That's that's uh over by, you know, uh Highway one. And so I I don't know. I don't know if that if they planned for that, but there's a big darn hill right in the way of that that uh one antenna. But we could we could let the uh the consultant do that.
You're talking in the maybe in this location across Highway one, correct? To that mountain? Okay.
Yeah, the propagation of that is probably be about two hundred feet. Max.
Yeah, it it could potentially be for the drivers on Highway one to have service also.
Yeah, we can
Hey, Jerry.
Questions to the applicant if you want.
Yeah.
What's the access to the roof? Is there a stairway that goes up there?
A ladder.
Or is it's a external ladder?
Yeah, right there.
You can also put markings on the ladder.
That that would be
Yeah. I mean, um as you're going up.
Mm hmm.
A warning for R F hazard.
Yeah, that could potentially be done as well.
And but put a bunch of them on because they're cheap.
To the wall. So it's relatively straightforward. At least it gives the people who are accessing the roof knowledge of um the potential hazard. And I think that's what Mike was getting. Yeah, right.
Correct.
Jerry, I have another question on the issue of when we look at this kind of a project, there are a lot of other cell towers in the area. When they do the report of these signals, do they measure accumulative from all the sites?
Uh they would if there are any in close proximity. There are some across roadway I know of. Um, I believe at this site over here, but uh none within close proximity to this site.
But would they measure that when they do the test?
Um if if it was closer, but now it doesn't really have any effects on the cumulative uh R F from a public standpoint.
Thank you.
Well, you know, there's a big flagpole there that's got that's got antennas in it.
Kind of the other side of Monras.
No, it's it's right. It's right on the site.
I know, but I'm saying is there's other.
Are you are you asking about the R F emissions or the propagation like for coverage?
Uh the R F emissions.
R F emissions. Yeah. So as Jerry said, if they were enough to they were encroached onto the project site into the same area, they'd be shown, but
And it if and the others might be lower than the requirements. But like I said, you talk about accumulate.
Yeah, so the R F reports that are provided, they're required to study that. So what they're required to do is study the impact and the uh increase on the cumulative R F emissions within that vicinity. And the standards set forth require that they maintain, um I can't remember the exact metric, but they have to say below a threshold of increase of R F as to what's already there. So it does take into account the whole all of them.
Hmm.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any more questions? Can we hear from the from the applicant now or or public?
Uh so now would be appropriate time to hear from the applicant. And I did just before we do that, it did just find uh there is a spec sheet for the generator. The applicant may have more um up to date information or this could um could differ. Uh but what's shown on here is it's a hundred and ninety gallon generac generator.
I'll ask the
Sure, yep.
Um the applicant Tom Johnson is online and I've asked him to unmute.
Good afternoon. Can you all hear me?
Yeah, certainly.
Perfect. Um I am joining via my phone and not computer, so I'm gonna hit the stay muted button that you asked me to unmute on.
Tom, I think you went and muted yourself. I'll go ahead and ask you to unmute again.
Did you? Okay, I should be unmuted now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
All right, perfect. Um I was saying, uh thank you, Commissioner and Jerry um for your presentation. You make running through uh this project um a lot simpler by your thoroughness of the review. Um some of the questions that uh should be addressed here, the signage I hear is kind of a concern. And I do agree with one of the commissioners placing signage at the ladder access point. I think that's a great idea. Um and we would welcome that as well. Um you could do either opposing sides of the ladder or also maybe even a a point on the opposing wall of the compound. That way you kind of see it from different angles. Confirmed as well, the gallon size of the backup generator is one hundred and ninety gallons. And that was another another question. The structural was uh another ask of, you know, the loading and the capacity that's being placed on the roof. Um the we did complete a structural analysis of the building and it did pass with the loading that is being proposed. As a general rule, the antennas each weigh, and they vary. The antennas are going to weigh anywhere from about 75 to 100 pounds each, just depending on the model. The radios, they're going to be equal, they're going to range anywhere from around 50 pounds to 80 pounds, just depending on the model. Your, the wind loading will also become a factor on some of the screening that'll be involved. But again, all of those factors came to the conclusion that the structural of that building did pass. And we did go through a very extensive process validating that as well. Sector C, which was the direction of the antennas that you were questioning whether or not it was going to be basically of any use because it was going to be propagating into the hillside. Yes, agreed. It will have some limitations because of the direction in which it is being placed because of the terrain that is there and the elevation at which the building is positioned. But it will offset some of the lack of coverage that you get when you're exiting that freeway off ramp as well as some of the capacity constraints that are right there along the highway. So although limited, it still has a benefit in that position. I think those were all of the questions that were being addressed, but if there's any additional ones that you'd like to discuss, please let me know.
On the fuel, you keep excess fuel at that site?
No.
How often is it serviced?
They usually service it about once a month.
And how much fuel do you use in that month typically?
They're gonna run it for about 15, 20 minutes is the general rule. I don't know what that offset is and how much usage of fuel is done in that period of time, but it's not much.
On the signage, are you agreeing that we could put signs on all four sides?
Yeah, I don't see an issue with that.
Okay. And a guesstimate of the total weight of the equipment on the roof?
Uh, if you want to give me a minute, I could do some math on the equipment.
You're talking about 15, 10, how many pieces of equipment at 75?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to, I'm pulling up some data real quick. Eighty-two, 130, so we've got 130. Two plus eighty-two. So each sector of antennas, just factoring the antennas, is just shy of 300 pounds. 294 pounds in weight on the antennas. Radios, you're gonna be around probably pretty close to the same, around 250 to 300 as well.
I just figured less than 1,000.
Yes, per sector of antennas, yes.
Thank you.
Do you think we should add the the about the signs for for.
Yeah, after we take a public comment, if the commission's inclined to make a motion to approve the project, I think that the staff would be very much in supportive of adding the addition of the signage on the actual rooftop parapets as well as the access ladder. I think that's a great idea.
Is there any anyone from looking to get in?
I currently see no attendees with their hands raised, but once again, information on meeting and providing public, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at icearchmonterre.org. And there are no hands raised.
Nobody. Okay, we have a a motion to approve or disapprove this?
I'll make the motion. I make the motion to be accept recommendation with the caveat of adding signs on all four sides and on the access ladder.
I'll second that.
Second by Dan? We have a a roll call?
Sure. Chair Dawson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Blue?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Hey, that motion carries with the vote of four. The decision is appealable to the city council within 10 days. And applications can be found online or in our planning office.
And before we leave the topic, what would we need to do to make a recommendation that on any application coming forward? We ask for signage on all four sides.
Staff can start incorporating that and just into our, you know, informally into our review process. As the applicant stated, these just go through pretty lengthy review and and we typically look at all obviously the requirements of the wireless ordinance, but also, you know, reoccurring patterns or trends that we see. So to avoid having to place a special condition of approval on every application, we can definitely start well, looking into that part of the review.
I think Jerry, Jerry could remember to do that for us.
Yeah.
Just wrote it down also.
And and before we move on, I just want to note the since this is a wireless application use permit, it's appealable within the next three days. So just.
And don't wait to pretend, yeah.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, um, we have any words from planning?
Oh, yes.
Good or bad?
So as you see in the planning update that was included in your packet, there was a prior to the holidays, we did have a special city council meeting where they considered the 2101 North Fremont Street Hotel project that you also considered the month prior. It was approved and the city council did adopt resolutions approving that project along with certifying the environmental impact report. And then last week it received approval at the architectural review committee meeting on Wednesday of last week. So that project has been, will now move forward to building permits.
Levi, was there any consideration of modifying the appearance a little bit to in line with what was recommended on the specific plan?
So the actually the the project while not being subject to the requirements of specific plan, the applicant had already designed a lot of the project with the sighting as well as the the design of the building to comply as much as they could with the specific plan requirements. But actually, at the architectural review committee meeting, there was not a there wasn't a lot of conversation as far as making alterations to the design or materials of the building. They did talk about some of the site planning, but didn't get into, there wasn't a lot of modifications suggested.
Well, I would, I would just say that if they're even considered that in their design concept, neighborhood would appreciate that.
Yes, and I do know that they did take it into consideration. And then also I did want to note, so we had previously discussed some upcoming training opportunities and I just wanted to circle back on that as that. So we had previously mentioned that the League of California Cities has their planning commissioners academy for 2024. It is March 6th through the 8th. So I did want to circle back on that. I have confirmed with Director Cole that we do have funding available if commissioners are looking to attend that that academy. It is in Long Beach, but we can't, like I said, we have funding for accommodations and travel as well as registration. So if you'll please let me know if you're interested in attending that. We can, Erica, myself can see to it that you get registered and that your accommodations are made.
I don't know how much fundage you have, but I'd recommend that new people go to it.
Yeah.
No, we 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 also are in strong support of our commissioners attending trainings and attending academies such as this. So we do have funding available for all those who are interested.
It's worthwhile, it really is.
And then also just so quickly note, as you see on here, we have a tentative agenda for the February 13th meeting. We'll be hopefully considering the emergency generator ordinance that we look to bring forward as staff. And then we also have a parking agreement that has required to come back to the planning commission. And that wraps it up.
Any commissioner comments? Everybody gonna be at the next meeting?
I do have a question. We used to get a parking permit. We don't go to visit sites anymore, but still I do go to some of them. We don't have parking passes anymore. Are they?
I do have a.
I've got one, I've got one, but it may have expired.
They're dated.
It could be, yeah.
I have a parking pass for you in the planning office.
Just for me?
I have an envelope with your name on it that was given to me.
Sounds like it's just for you.
Yes, that's for you exclusively for you.
That should be for all of us, so.
Are you, are you talking about parking for out here and City Hall lot or?
No, I'm talking about.
What's that?
All over town.
Okay.
As if we're visiting a site.
Got it. Interesting.
I still have that plastic one that you hang on your mirror.
Yeah.
Is that what it is? Okay. We'll see to it, it's taken care of.
Thank you.
Right, not a mess.
We did make 415.
It's a 556 and we're out of here. 456, 456.
Okay.